I'd like to call the Monday, May 2nd, 2022, meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM. And Councilman President, Councilman Frankie. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Kaneshny?
Present.
Councilwoman West? Here. Councilwoman Cutler?
Present.
Councilman Frankie?
Present.
Councilwoman Ficus?
Present.
Councilman Vincent?
Here.
Councilman Galloway?
Here.
Seven present, sorry.
And I would like to thank the glue for coming in. Annette Lefler and taking the minutes here, so thank you. As always, she fills in wherever is needed. Approval of minutes, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes is presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Petitions and comments of citizens. Brian Cager, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Brian Cager, 406 Neeson Street, LaPorte. Two things. Thanks for, Monroe Manor is chugging along, so that's nice. It's a real mess right now, but when it's done, it'll all be worth it. And then, I put on the comment card, the economy of the city. So I did some double checking yesterday, because I just happened to be in St. Joe County and in Porter County. And gas is $4 a gallon. And here, LaPorte, it's $4.40. Which I don't expect you guys to be able to do anything about that. But I wanted to bring it up, so at least I can talk about it tomorrow on the radio. Something's out of balance. Like literally, it's always been a problem, but gas was $3.99 in 406 in Valparaiso yesterday, and the same thing in South Bend. And here, we're paying $4.40. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. And just so you know, we're doing Monroe Manor, not for you, but for your mom. All right. Any other petitions or comments from the public? Maybe somebody that did not sign a form? Like our own very, David Heinhold.
Good evening, Council. David Heinhold, City Planner, just coming to you tonight to present a reminder for the Active Living Workshop that will be hosted next Thursday, May 12th. This is an all-day workshop, it's nine to four. We are going to be having registration onsite, beginning at 8:30 at the Civic Auditorium. We want people to register ahead of time, so we can get the right amount of lunch accommodations for people. So giving it a week in advance is always nice. This will include presentations, group discussions for the community to get involved around active transportation, healthy living, and give them opportunities to learn how to better their overall quality of life in their neighborhoods and where they live. This will also include a walk audit through the neighborhood around the Civic, as well as Lincoln Elementary School and parts of downtown, incorporating some commercial areas, some residential, and different institutional areas. So just kind of leave it at that. The press release did go out on the website, it's all the news link there. There's a survey link to a Survey Monkey for people to sign up. And I believe there's some other information that has gone out in the past. So we're posting flyers and doing all we can to get people to sign up. And certainly, all of you are welcome to attend if you are able. Thank you.
And David, so example, somebody that's interested for their family to travel by bike, wants to learn more, what's examples here?
Yeah, so examples of active transportation are people that may be walking or bicycling in the neighborhood. Or we're also looking at, you know, mobility impairments are another issue. So we're looking at the good and the bad of sidewalks around the school, around the Civic. So giving examples of good sidewalks, good opportunities for people to cross the street, to get to a business, or like a retail shop or something where they can go shopping. So that kind of gives them an idea of how, what kind of tools they can be presented with, and they can take action in their own communities. And at the end of this process, in coordination with Indiana Health by Design and the Department of Health, Division of Physical Activity and Nutrition, we're going to be a part of a one-year action plan. So along with the community, we'll be developing that, a certain project that we can implement. And there's a range of different things that can go on. They don't have to be physical projects. They can be plans, they can be, you know, certain like, other kinds of opportunities for people to get involved with the community.
Questions for Mr. Heinhold. It's a great opportunity, when you talk about sidewalks, obviously due to ordinance, that's been up for a lot of years. Each homeowner is responsible to repairing and fixing their sidewalk. And I know the council and I are working on ideas, how we can maybe possibly help that on a bigger scale. Obviously, we only spend $50,000, $100,000 a year, and we try to help wherever we can. But with the homeowners responsible for that, we're going to see what we can do on a bigger scale.
Yep, exactly. Yep. It's a good way to get the community involved.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Further comments from the public? Please state your name and address, if you did not fill out a comment card.
Danny Streeter, 210 Crescent Drive, LaPorte, Indiana. I'm here to invite you to, I've been working with Baby Bachelor back there, I mean Jeff Bachelor back there, on a slicer cleanup day. I okayed it with Steve Santana today. May 14th, 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock, I'll be buying pizza for the kids. We're going to clean the town up a little bit more, or a lot more. So I'm inviting all of you to join us. We might need some supervision. Roger.
Supervise, buddy.
I know pizza, you want beer, but can't have beer with kids, but anyways. So Tom, Sunday's your big day to lay on the couch, but I expect you there too.
Thank you.
Anyways, so we're going to tear it up.
The mayor would appreciate being included in that. So May 14th, 4 to 7 o'clock, Jeff?
I'll have the details.
Mr. Bachelor, Mr. Streeter, thank you both. Other comments from the public? Anybody online?
Yes, there was one comment that the sound wasn't working, but we believe that we've addressed that. Is that correct?
It is working.
And then Mr. Jeff Miller wanted to know, did LaPorte apply properly for the community crossing grants for road repair this year?
Absolutely, we do. Due to lack of funding, we cannot apply two times a year. We have to generate all our funds for one application. And we will be putting those dollars into roads, I think June 1st, from last year's money as we move forward. And we'll explain that a little further in our paving plan. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, I'm County Councilman Mike Rosenbaum, LaPorte County. I live at 1515 Indiana Avenue. I do apologize for not doing the formal approach of filling out the paperwork. It's been quite a while since I've had the pleasure of being here with you. But when you had the open announcement about the City of LaPorte paving plan, there is one thing that came to my attention, as I try and think forward about lots of things, whether it's for the county, for the people, whatever. And so my issue, or my question, is to ask you to reflect and see if we can do something on one street, and one small section, and that is on State Street. It is between Chicago and Tyler. And what's over there? It is our EMS station on the other side of the post office. There's a little traffic circle that's not in terrible shape, not in the best, but it's not in terrible. But we're rolling $1.5 million worth of equipment and four ambulances every day over that. Now, we just got four new ambulances, but two of them are not headed in that direction. They're headed in other directions. And the other problem we have is that we can't get any more for another two years. So we need to try and find a way to extend the life of our ambulances in any way and any shape that we don't have to be rumbling over a bad road, would be a wonderful thing to have happen. So if that can be considered, I understand if it has to be in another year, but I have to come forward and ask you to at least take a look at that, in trying to be proactive and save our equipment. We have a great relationship with your fire and your police department, and working with our AMS, and we just love working with them and appreciate that. I do have a second thing that I'd like to add, and that is, even though it's just outside the city, it can help the city. We are putting, we are starting with a groundbreaking ceremony on May 4th, just two days from now, at 2:00 PM. And it is a groundbreaking for our new EMS station to be located at 5022 East Oak No. Road. And if anybody's not familiar, it's a little triangle between 2 and 20, just on the western side of the, I'm trying, the dog bone is, everybody likes to refer to it. And it has been many years in the making. It got delayed. Unfortunately, delays cost a lot of money, but that's the progress. We need to move forward with that. But I believe that this is going to help serve the eastern part of LaPorte a lot faster than sometimes coming right out of the middle of the city. So thank you very much for your time. Have a great meeting.
Thank you, Councilman. And I think you'll be pleased from your first request, once we open it up to this evening, because that's probably the one area we receive more phone calls, Washington Street behind the jail, or north of the jail, and this as well. So we're excited. So thank you for pointing that out. By the way, I would like to thank Mike Rosenbaum and those County Councilmen that had the courage and leadership to recognize that we need to keep our police and fire here in the City of LaPorte, in Michigan City and in the county, and supported the public safety lit. So we're very appreciative of you helping lead that charge. And I know the fire and police are as well. And thank you, Mike. All right. Standing Committee reports. Council President Frankie.
The first meeting ever of the Committee on Sustainability happened last Monday, the 25th. Officers were elected, and some general brainstorming about where the group is going to go, and some potential plans for the near future. But the group is full of experienced and smart people, and I'm looking forward to seeing what that accomplishes. Redevelopment Commission met on Wednesday, the 27th. It lasted for about five minutes. Some bills were approved, and that was pretty much it. The school board meets next Monday, the 9th, at 6:00 PM.
Councilwoman Ficus?
Settle in, I got a long one. Park Board met on April 20th. Maintenance Foreman Mike Lombaris was recognized for 40 years of service to the Park and Recreation Department. Mark Schreiber hopes to have him around for another 40 years. Alexa Costa will be partnering with the Park Department to operate her food truck, Costa Crave, out of the beach house this summer. She will sign a three-year lease with a 180-day opt-out. So I think that's really good for the beach, that she's going to be there every day. Nine proposals were submitted for a new place structure at Ben Reese Park. The Board opted for a proposal from Sinclair Recreation. City Engineer Nick Minnick attended the meeting to discuss the Stone Lake Trail expansion. The Board accepted and supported the design as proposed. Steve Ruby from Aben Marsh presented a site plan for the Kessling Park Baseball Softball Complex. Several options are being discussed, with one of them being an all-inclusive challenger field. A collection and harvest agreement was accepted between the Park Department and Cardinal Native Plant Nursery out of Waukerton. Cardinal will be accessing property in the Hennessy Wetlands to extract new far at Vena, and will pay the Park Department a total of up to $3,500 for any new far that is harvested. A zero tolerance policy for umpire abuse was adopted unanimously. In the simplest of terms, umpire abuse is defined as any deliberate action that makes an umpire feel physically threatened, verbally intimidated, or emotionally humiliated. The Civic Auditorium will now be charging a convenience fee of, from 0 to 5% on event tickets. They are switching from Eventbrite to View Stub for ticket purchasing. This allows the Civic to earn income on events where ticket sales go directly to a promoter and not to the Civic, even though the Civic is handling the ticket sales for the promoter. And then as a reminder, because of the primary being tomorrow, Traffic Commission will meet next Tuesday, May 10th, 6:00 PM at the police station.
Carol, can you mention the field, because I think that's very neat that they're looking to do?
Yeah, they want to do, they had different scenarios and different buildings, different sizes of buildings, but they want to do an all-inclusive challenger field, which means that kids with disabilities will be able to play on this field. And I think it would be amazing for LaPorte to have something like that. I mean, we get so much with the baseball and the youth leagues anyway in LaPorte, that this will just open up a lot more possibilities too. So I thought that was very cool, that that's included.
Councilman Vincent?
Nothing to add this evening.
Councilman Galloway?
Next Monday, May the 9th, be a Mayor's Veterans Committee meeting at 5 o'clock at the Park Department. And week from tomorrow, May 10th, will be a Police Merit Commission meeting, 2 o'clock at the police station.
Councilwoman Cutler?
This month, the Bid Board will meet Monday, the 9th, at 5 o'clock here in Council Chambers. And the UEA will meet Wednesday, the 18th, at 4 o'clock at the LEAP offices, the new LEAP offices, as a reminder.
Councilwoman West?
The next Fire Merit Commission meeting will be Wednesday, May 3rd, at Fire Station Number One on 18th Street at 6:30. And after that meeting, an interview committee of commission members and department officers will be conducting interviews with prospective applicants.
Councilwoman Kaneshny?
The HPC will meet Tuesday, May 17th, in Council Chambers at 5:30. And the Airport Authority is scheduled to meet next Wednesday, May 11th, at 5:15 at the airport.
Thank you. City LaPorte Road Plan. And I was going to stand up and present from here, but the way Mr. Streeter's slumping, laying there, he won't be able to see, so I will do it from my chair here. If you could, yes. So, you know, we get a lot of questions about roads, and when people call, they say, "I need this road done." I'm sure you all hear it. "I need it done tomorrow." "I need it paved." So I think what we tried to do with this presentation is clearly, we're not doing a great job of allowing the public to understand the limits of our financials, to do roads, what the costs are, and actually, the progress before my time and those on the council have made in roads that necessarily don't receive credit for, and how difficult it is to stay on top of that. So, I mean, you have, since 2015, really when the first paving program, and Nick Minnick, and, you know, we had six years, people forget six years of property tax debacles. And, you know, you've got, I'm not even sure, Mayor Milo, Mayor Krantz, Mayor Crowback, in that range during that property tax debacle. It's difficult to generate funds when you're just trying to stay alive. So they weren't able to do much paving. In an older community like ours, it takes a lot of money to continue on. And I think that's why I'm so sensitive about the latest property tax debacle by the auditor, is because we don't want to go back into that same scenario. But it has made it difficult for us to do roads moving forward. So we thought we'd share a little history, and I'm going to do most of the speaking, because we've got Nick focused on the important stuff. But just again, for a little history, 2013, 30-year bond was taken out as a stopgap measure for any paving to occur. That's how difficult things were financially for the City of LaPorte during all this debacle, that a bond had to be taken out just to do a stopgap fix. And then in 2015, was actually the first annual paving project done in several years. And the city scraped through to get as every dollar it could to help pave. And then in 2016, and I think this is a big change that you won't see today, tomorrow, but in the long run, you will, when our engineering team, led by Nick Minnick, said, "Look, no more worst firsts." No more when a councilman calls and says, "I need this road paved," or "all we're going to focus on are the worst roads and let the bad goes, or bad roads go bad." We're continually chasing our tail. And so we have to keep our good roads good. And that's a priority. And doing the worst first, this is not any way to fix an entire failing road network that we've been facing in the City of LaPorte for many years. So just to give an example, city streets, LaPorte has 113 miles of city streets to maintain. Curb to curb, that's 15.4 million square feet. So we kind of gave you a basis, that's equivalent citywide to 3,416 basketball courts. And we're only financially able to do, on average, 150 of those basketball courts a year, on average. So when you talk about maintenance, yes, it is expensive. And if you look at this, if we were to pave, just pave, not build all the way up, but just pave the top of all 113 miles, it would be $42 million in one year. If we were to fully reconstruct each road, 113 miles, and you can see subgrade curbs, sidewalks included, it could cost anywhere from $200 to $400 million. And if we wanted to do every, and I think Nick brought this up, every area, like we're doing Monroe Manor, it'd be at $400 million. And we're only guaranteed, if you go back, I'm sorry, Jess, and if you look at the bottom, we're only guaranteed an average of $728,000 in local fees. So we've got either, you pick 42 million, 400 million, whichever one you want, and we get less than a million of local fees to fix and maintain. Fix and maintain roads. And the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. We want to get it on. We want you guys to feel good, and we want to respond. So how do we determine which roads are paved first? I'm going to turn this over to Nick Minnick, this page, and he's going to give you, if you want to stand here, that's great, basically how we got away from worst first and went actually into a management system for the future.
Sure. Probably the most widely recognized system in the state, and the state uses this on all of their metrics, is the PACER system. It's a 1 to 10 rating, so one being the worst. It's a surface quality rating. It doesn't, it can help you understand what's happening, you know, at the base of the road, underneath the pavement, but really, it's what's showing through on the surface. 10 being the best. I think it's important to realize, you can only have a PACER rating of 10 after the road's been reconstructed, and that's for a year. So to say we're going to have all of our roads at a 10 really isn't a reasonable thing to suggest, because that's almost impossible financially or otherwise, and really doesn't use our resources efficiently. So our current score is about a 6.1, and that was calculated at the end of last year. So that was November of last year. Winter always takes a toll on our roads. We evaluate these towards the end of the summer or in the fall, in most scenarios. Our score was in 2020, a 5.7. And this is the average for the whole road network. And then in 16, when we kind of started this whole thing, it was a 4.6. So our overall goal is a 7.0. We projected that in, within five years, we would be somewhere in the mid to upper fives, and we're at the 6.1 in six years. So I think we're actually kind of a little bit better than we would hope in some areas. But again, what's going on here is, we're moving away from, we have moved away from a worst-first philosophy, and a lot of people struggle to understand that still, because they say, "Well, my road is the worst, it needs fixed now." And the problem with that is, the cost associated with fixing the worst roads is so high that if we're using all of our financial resources to fix those roads, we can't keep the roads that are in fairly good condition and good condition with less treatment that costs a lot less. So we use this PACER system and try and make sure that we are maximizing every single tax dollar possible and multiplying them whenever available.
So when you, Nick, when you look at this, if you could just give the example on the next slide, the PACER rating, which is, I think people need to see that, progress is happening, but we just started this in 2015, so it's going to take time, especially when we have older roads.
Yeah, so the baseline we use is 2016, even though in 2015, we did close to 10% of the city with kind of that, there's several sources of funds that we kind of scraped together. So when you look at the breakdown of, you know, where our roads are, from poor to good, you look at the 5.5, so that's reflective of the roads that we paved last year. So as of right now, I think it's very hard to say that we have 10s, and that's just part of the whole deterioration of pavement. So we do have quite a few eights, which shows that we've really been, you know, putting a lot of investment into our roads. And then we still have quite a few in the three, you know, three to four, some twos, and even some ones that, because we've been doing asset management in the way that we have, we're developing some kind of additional money within our budget to go back and do full-depth pavement or reconstruction of these roads in the two to three range. We kind of turned that corner last year, and you'll see more and more local streets getting full-depth pavement replacement.
And example, can you give an example of a road, so they can visualize what we're talking about when there's a seven or?
Yeah, so as an example, we'll start at the top there, you know, twos and threes. In this year's program, we're looking at, and kind of within the last couple, like Plain Street would be a good example. Plain Street was in very poor condition, kind of in that two to three range, and we were able to do a lot of full-depth pavement to bring that back, hopefully. And then when you get to, say, a seven or an eight, a seven or an eight, Michigan Ave was done about three years ago, and it's probably at an eight. In some cases, it may even be at a seven. And it's just the amount of deterioration and the treatment, and everything factors into how quickly that will deteriorate, so.
Thank you, Nick. Stick close, just in case. So where do we get the money? And here's where it gets interesting. So the wheel tax. And I've had conversation with people just this week about the wheel tax. I mean, if people sign a letter and say, "Look, I don't want our roads done for 10 years, and we'll get rid of the wheel tax," that solves a lot of problems. We don't have to have the street department doing it and so forth. But if you want roads done, and we want to be a progressive community, this was the one option the state gave the City of LaPorte, many counties, to say, "Hey, if you want to double your money with the state, you first must pass a wheel tax." So if you look here, paid at the BMV, $15 for motorcycles, $25 for cars, and $40 for trailers, this generates an approximately 500,000, just over 500,000 annually. The street maintenance fee, $2 on your monthly utility bill generates another 100 or $200,000 a year. We are very appreciative of every resident that are paying the wheel tax and the street maintenance fee, because these are the only funds that we have to use for roads, and more importantly, the only funds that we can use based on the state providing community crossings, which is a 50-50 match, or federal aid, which is 80-20. So what I can tell you, and this is before my time, and I don't like it, because we can all find roads that are bad in our community. I would tell you, our engineering department, Nick Minnick, and the previous mayors, again, I don't care Republican or Democrat, and the council worked to find and match every penny that was coming in here to get as much paving done as possible. And please, take your questions down, because we want to make sure everybody leaves here together and on social media, that we all have the same concept, that we all don't like it. All of us, I'm sure you get calls, what roads can be paved? We'd love to pave as many roads as possible. But, and then here we go, total wheel tax collected since 2016, again, before my time, 2.6 million through the wheel tax, which is enabled to work on 52 miles of paving projects, at a total cost of $11.2 million, because the city team, again, before my time, so I'm independent of this, were able to manage the 80-20 as much as possible, as well as the 50-50, so that every dollar had a match before it went into the ground to pave. And if we did not have those funds, instead of 52 miles, it would be 17 complete miles for the wheel tax collected. So with that, and again, we know not every road is going to be able to be done. But I would tell you, two of the main areas that we've talked about, or we've heard from constituents that they want done, is number one, Washington Street, behind the jail, between Michigan and Madison. So that will have a mill and resurface, as well as Chicago, Mr. Rosenbaum, because of your work, working with the city, EMS, and so forth. And because we get a lot of calls, people dr- And because we get a lot of calls, people dropping their mail at the post office and so forth and driving around on that difficult road. So this, based on the 50-50 match from the state, these are the main roads. And I don't know, council, if you want me to go through each of them? I'd be glad to.
I don't think so.
But Third Street, Andrew Ave, and Andrew Ave is another one. If you look at West 18th Street, Andrew, go back to the dead end, that was, has been bad for a long time, and I think that's another one. And then the other part, Darlington. Take a drive down Darlington, and I'm embarrassed that we have manufacturers there. And so this one's on me. We need, I'm responsible that I haven't done anything sooner, and this team has come up to make sure that's a part of cleaning that up and fixing that. And then Wright Avenue, a couple other points. And more importantly there, Kingsbury Ave, where we see a lot of traffic back and forth. Here's some picture examples of why we have it on there. Andrew Ave, Third Street, Division Street. And again, obviously, Mr. Rosenbaum, you liked that picture, getting that repaired. Washington Street. And this work could begin as early as June 1st, and we'll have over 1.8 million to improve 5.3 miles. And let me reiterate, not near enough. We see it every day. This team here, our engineering team, our street team, and I want to point out, Jeff Bachelor, head of street, stand-up, Mike Fraze, street department, David Heinhold, engineering department, they are working every day, finding every penny possible, led by Nick Minnick here, of what we can put in the roads as much as possible. So we also have some potential future projects. Federal aid, F Street, a lot of people have talked about the high school, along the high school, let's get that cleaned up. And then Sixth Street, I to F. Monroe Manor, if you haven't seen Monroe Manor, continue to drive, that's a part of our sewer separation, and all those roads will be reconstructed. And then one of our focuses through Jerry Jackson, and I've talked about, are the letter and number streets. And with the sewer separation, letter and number streets from 18th Street to 10th Street will also be done, and spent some time since that has been done. And probably the other one, I think all of us that enjoy our parks will appreciate, and that's Truesdale, from basically the apartments all the way to McClung. So that's a great road, needs to be done, and we're excited about that one. Lastly, as you can see, and Nick, do you want to go ahead and describe what you've done because you're the one that's led this charge over the years?
Yeah, so the map here is just representative of the projects that we've had between 2016 and 2022. I think one, the mayor didn't mention, on our federal aid route paving program, we've the section of Boyd Boulevard, that's quite an issue.
Yes.
And again, those funds become kind of a challenge because there's a lot that goes into using federal money. Sometimes we don't always have control over how and when those projects happen as much as we'd like to. But what you can see with this map is essentially kind of the progression. Some of these streets, the treatment on them was a little bit less, and that was to preserve them, and, you know, they may be coming up in the next year or two years. But you can see kind of this colorful image of all of the streets that we've been able to work on over the past five, six years, and the streets that we're going to be working on this year as well.
Questions? Well, and first, before we do, if it's okay, Nick, do you mind coming back? And then we'll do social media. And I hope that we couldn't put, be respectful, but put feelings aside, ask any questions you want. We want to have a good understanding of our road program, and you may have ideas we haven't thought about. We want to be able to answer questions that you may have. Jeff Bachelor, Mike Fraze, and their entire team are filling potholes every single day. Is that fair? Do you know how many, not to put you on the spot, how many potholes we've filled so far this year? Roughly?
Roughly over 6,000.
6,000 potholes. And some don't stay, we get the weather, things change, but we're constantly, and within 48 hours, most of the time, we're filling those potholes because we take this serious and we do mean business. So Nick, are you ready? Nick Otis, ready?
So the first question is from Jeff Watt. So are we ignoring the worst roads because they cost too much?
No, not at all. Essentially, we are prioritizing the worst roads, not in a time standpoint, but by being able to create the funds to fix them properly. So instead of going in and just putting a Band-Aid on a really bad road, in order to properly fix that road, we have to have enough money available. If we go and let all of the other roads deteriorate in order to have that money, then we're constantly getting behind. So we're not neglecting the worst roads at all, and actually what we're trying to do is prioritize every dollar we have available so that we can do those roads right. So it takes time to get there, and it's taken a few years to get there, but we're starting to get to those roads that mostly the local streets that are at the Pacer ratings of twos, threes, and fours, that we can go in and do full-depth pavement replacement instead of just trying to, you know, inch them along for a little bit more.
But we are going to maintain the good roads because then we'll be in the same situation that we were, so.
And Mr. Watt did respond and said, thank you very much for your response. And then a gentleman asked, and I don't quite understand the question, but are sidewalks a part of this or not?
Sidewalks, I mean, and I'll say this, on some of the state projects, they didn't even do the sidewalks as a part of Lincoln Way and so forth. But again, in ordinance for years, sidewalks have been the residential or residence responsibility, but we're excited, hopefully try to help residents and come up with a plan financially to help them repair their sidewalks.
And both the federal and state dollars are geared towards roads. So the money we have for paving is really geared towards paving. The state's ADA transition plan calls for any state or federal dollars to improve ramps only. They allow us to do sidewalks in certain scenarios, but if a sidewalk does not exist, it is not eligible for replacement or repair under the community crossings program. So really, these funds are geared and focused on trying to get more pavement in the roads. The state does not have the same view of sidewalks as a city would.
Next question.
I think that was it. I just had a comment note that, since I use the Kingsbury sidewalk quite a bit, how in one winter what salt can just do to that concrete. It was pretty, it's not terrible, but you could tell it's taking, it peels off that top layer.
And that was actually an issue probably with the concrete, so we're addressing that with the contractor to get it replaced.
And on social media, anybody, we don't wait till this is done, and then people post things. We want to get their answers direct to them, one-on-one. So thank you, Nick. Anybody from the public? I'm going to let the public go. Go ahead.
Well, I did, I know people have asked it and ask it here, but have we ever done roads in-house, or is it just did not make any financial sense?
We've had a lot of discussions whether or not it was feasible to do that. The issue is most paving contractors own their own plants, and a lot of times the price at which they're selling asphalt to others is not that much less than they're putting it down in the streets. So they make their money by selling asphalt, and the cost for them to then place it is almost insurmountable for us to get the equipment, have the training, and then use our staff that, you know, they may do this for a portion of their job, but they have so many other things to do too. So getting the expertise of a professional firm that this is what they do, and then, you know, the amount of equipment necessary to get to us paving is just not something that dollars and cents works in the best interest of the community.
Questions from the public that are here. Rick Ogle, come on forward, please.
Name, please, and then address. Rick Ogle, 1902 Indiana Ave. Having been basically living downtown since I was born in the business, Michigan Ave, and I'm thinking more about Madison. When they work on these streets, aren't the railroad tracks still under there? And why would they be? Because after a while, you see the tracks again. Everything breaks up, and the tracks are there. It just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me because after four or five years, you'll start to see cracks on Michigan Ave, I'll be willing to guarantee it, and then the tracks will show. Lived with it, loved it. Thank you.
I don't know if you want to respond, Nick. I don't have a good response.
Yeah, no, no, we, there are two streets, Michigan and Madison, that both have railroad tracks underneath them. When we repaved Michigan, we were able to take some of that out. We would like to do that next time we do Madison. Madison is kind of due for kind of full-depth reconstruction. One of the, we had applied to just do a resurface on it to hold it over, which we wouldn't have done that work. We wouldn't have removed the tracks, but would have held it over long enough to get us through to when we see redevelopment of the hospital site. So whatever happens on Madison, whether, you know, how we reconstruct that street will probably hinge on the type of redevelopment we see at the hospital site. So we're not kind of rushing into that one, but we know they're there. I always joke that, you know, we need to make sure we do those streets specifically when scrap prices are very high, and that's the only way we're going to cost-effectively be able to tear all those out. But again, we were able to take some of it out last time we did Michigan. Madison will remain an issue until we can fully reconstruct.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak or ask questions? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Social media, too.
And welcome.
Thank you for coming and fixing that for me. Joe Buddha, 306 D Street. I had a question more for you, Nick. You said that you guys spend all your money every year, every dollar, I forget exactly how you phrase it, but you also said you're prioritizing streets. How are you saving money then to fix the worst streets if you're maintaining the ones and you're spending every dollar you have on the ones you're maintaining? What's the plan to fix these worst streets money-wise? Or are we always going to be chasing the dollar and never actually get to the streets that are flooded and everything else over by the high school? Which is, I know, like a lot of people in my neighborhood, we just want a clarification, more of an open line of communication instead of, you know, well, this is going to get done. Once it's going to get done, is there somewhere where we can see where, what the plan is online or whatever, just so there's a communication going on? Thank you guys for your time.
And thanks. I was glad, and I do want to point out, you were pleased, I know Jeff Bachelor and the street department came out.
Yes, next day, I greatly appreciate that. I can actually unload the groceries in front of my house, made my wife happy, which makes me happy.
And the letter and number, and I think that's a good point as well, Nick, if you want to bring up, I don't know if the bus barn has any factor into this or not with the water?
It does. In that area, we have, and there's a couple other areas, we have an underlying issue with stormwater, but on a larger scale. So in that area in particular, with the city's agreement with the school corporation to acquire the bus barn as part of a property swap, previously, the Fox and Woolen Mills were acquired by the city. Those things are kind of necessary to handle the stormwater completely. It's always difficult to go in and pave a street and then have it deteriorate significantly faster than you would like because there's an underlying stormwater issue. So if people kind of remember, the stormwater utility was formed not very long ago, and just last year, I think, was the first year that we actually, actually this year, beginning of this year, was the first year it started to be fully funded. So those drainage types of projects are actually coming out of the stormwater funds, not necessarily road paving funds. So we do need those issues addressed through the stormwater utility so that we can, you know, have good pavement and maintain it longer. For example, with keeping good streets in good condition in order to get to the ones that are in not good condition, if we are spending, say, $100,000 per mile to $200,000 per mile to resurface a street, reconstructing is probably well over $1 million, maybe $2 million. So what we need to be doing is keeping those streets that are less expensive to maintain in good condition, maintain in good condition, and because of that, we then have additional budget to go in and maybe spend the million dollars it takes to reconstruct because we have more streets that are at, you know, five, six, seven. I think maintenance is really key, too. So our street department has done a really great job of stepping up and doing more crack sealing, and, you know, that's the, those are the lowest-cost items to preserve pavement as long as possible so we can get as many years of life out of a pavement section. The more years of life we get out of a pavement section, the less expensive it is for the community overall.
Thank you. And from the council's perspective, you committed a couple years ago now to address the 100-year-old, $100 million problem of sewer separation, which we've started to see 10th, 8th Street, or 18th Street through 10th Street, the letters and numbers. With the sewer separation that's happening, there's going to be new road, correct? And there'll be new road there, and when we get, it won't be tomorrow, but when we continue to move north, we'll continue to address it. But again, it's a $100 million problem that we've all together chosen not to ignore. So anybody else from the public?
We have a couple comments.
A couple more comments? Go ahead.
We have a question. Are newly paved roads inspected if, you know, if there's mistakes that are made? So you brought up the sidewalk, Nick, are, what's the post-construction process?
Yeah, so we, over the past few years, we've used outside consultants. Previous to that, we've kind of used street department staff for a little while, and then engineering staff. It ends up being a lot to take on with all the other projects, so we've kind of used some consultants to oversee the paving generally. And then we, as the engineering department, review all the streets and then do a final walkthrough with the contractor and then have them address any punch list items.
What kind of, to the extent there's a warranty, what kind of promise does there, does the?
There's not really a warranty with the material. So the issue is, if we know there's an issue with the material, with our federal aid paving programs, we're able to basically use indots in federal highways, testing that they do with asphalt to verify that. We use the exact same mix and exact same products on our local streets then, too. So we, you know, we try to make sure that we're getting the quality product. We try and make sure that that's happening during the paving process, but then also we come back and verify. And we do, if there is an issue, our contractors have been willing to come back and fix it too, so.
And we'll also hold final payment, too.
We have, yep. We've held final payment.
That's the best way to get their attention. If they're not doing their job, we'll hold their payment.
Yep.
And then there was a question, is there a way to find out how often roads are redone while some go forever without proper maintenance? And I guess I would, what you spoke to earlier about how you evaluate roads.
We have no record of any paving that happened on a regular basis before 2015. So now that we have a citywide asset management system, we actually are able to track when and how pavements are handled here in the city. So when a road is resurfaced, we now know when that happened, we know what the treatment was, we track crack sealing along with that. So we know how our pavements are handling, wear and tear. I think that becomes really important because what we base all of our asset management off of and determine, how do we, you know, what's the proper mix of funding, is a pavement deterioration curve, and each road is a little bit different. Some roads, based on, you know, how many vehicles are there, how thick the pavement section is, all these things, you know, it may last 30 years with very minimal, you know, maintenance, or it may last five. So, you know, every road is different, and we have to constantly adjust that and figure out what the right investment in our infrastructure is.
Any other comments from the public? Thank you. Any other comments?
Jay Seberg said, great job to the mayor and the street department to fix the city streets one street at a time.
Well, this is all them, and again, I don't know if I've introduced, have I introduced all of you in the back?
Yep.
They're always out there, available, you can find them. Some choose to find them at 5:30 in the morning, and great. Questions from the council?
Excuse me, I have a question regarding, I'm guessing it's too expensive and maybe not available, but have you ever looked at alternatives to asphalt such as like plastic pellet recycling or?
So we don't have, I haven't seen a lot of research where it's been widely used. We don't see a lot of that widespread implemented in our asphalt. There's, I think there's a little bit more maybe with concrete, but concrete streets have been very, very difficult for us financially to accept. So, and then there's all kinds of maintenance, other maintenance issues with that. So we are always open to new technologies. We're always open to looking for what is the, the right product for the right situation. I just, I haven't seen the research and data that we have contractors willing and able to do something very different from, from what we've been doing. So, and we can push them. We can definitely push them. Uh, we can continue to, to see, you know, I, I, you know, Purdue and LTAP are great resources to, to keep finding alternatives to try and make, make our, our roads last longer.
And Jeff Bachelor and Mike Fraz both just returned four weeks ago from God's country where they had, um, road school and different, uh, vendors, correct? Looking at different items like this. And weren't you testing something back here recently? Couple of months? I thought you were testing something road-wise.
Um, what we, what we started doing was doing the total patching a little bit different than what we were doing before. So it's a great tool, you know, before, once the temperature gets to a certain above, above 32, usually above 40 is a lot better for us too. But the total patcher, if we can get in there, rather than spend all the money that Nick's talking about doing it, we get in there, clean it up.
A pothole, correct?
Well, but it also, you can actually do small portions of the road too and clean it up and then taking, you put down the, the tar, then you put rocks over the top of it and just keep going back and forth and build it up and then seal over the top of it. And it saves us a lot of money and it lasts for two or three years. So it, so it does help a lot.
Council questions? Anything else?
I just have one question. Is that available now on the website, on the plan?
It will be after tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
And please, we encourage, call. You've got my cell phone, anybody else's, uh, call us with questions. See the guys out in the field doing their work and the engineering department is as well. So we don't need to actually approve this, correct?
Correct.
Are you comfortable it's headed in the right path?
Oh, yeah.
Yes?
I, I actually think that I have all of the original information when we started the Pacer Assessment Program and things have definitely changed since 15 or 16. I can tell you that.
Great job to the team. I'll stand with these guys anytime. Done a wonderful job. They each have their strengths and, uh, built, uh, they're really focused on pride and making sure everything looks great. So thank you. And I've told them, this is the end of their, part of their night, so go enjoy your families, get out and enjoy. Don't race too fast.
All right.
Councilwoman Ficus, second and final reading of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to read an ordinance for the second time by title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus.
Ordinance reestablishing the Cumulative Capital Development Fund under Indiana Code 36-9-15.5.
Discussion. Councilwoman Ficus, would you like to expand?
Um, this was just, I think this was a CCD fund that, that Courtney said, um, that we were going to do the, the five cents per 100 of the assessed valuation, beginning with the taxes that are payable in 2023.
Questions from the public? Questions from the council? I do have a motion and a second discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Councilman Vincent.
Honorable mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a second and final reading of an ordinance.
Take it.
By title only.
I have a motion and do I have a second? Take it.
Thank you.
Discussion. Hearing none.
Yeah, he does.
All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Vincent.
An ordinance authorizing the collection of an administrative fee for a municipality's urban enterprise association.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion, and I believe this was a very, uh, minor change that we discussed at the first, uh, on the first reading. Is there any discussion from the public? Questions from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. Councilwoman Kaneshny.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce an ordinance read for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Kaneshny.
An ordinance to vacate Jackson Street from Washington Street to the Railroad Rightofway and an alley north of Washington Street and south of the Railroad Rightofway and in between Jackson Street and Clay Street in the city of LaPorte, Indiana. Whereas, the petitioners, Indiana Portfolio One LLC, have filed a petition with the common council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, for the vacation of the portion of Jackson Street from Washington Street to the Railroad Rightofway and an alley north of Washington Street and south of the Railroad Rightofway between Jackson Street and Clay Street in the city of LaPorte, Indiana. And whereas, petitioner is the owner of the land which abuts the public way. And whereas, property owners of the land adjoining and abutting lots have been served with a notice of a public hearing pursuant to the Indiana statute. And whereas, notice of the public hearing on the ordinance was published in the LaPorte Herald Argus at least 10 days prior to the public hearing. And whereas, the public hearing was held on the second day of May 2022 in the chambers of LaPorte City Hall located at 801 Michigan Avenue, LaPorte, Indiana, at which hearing all interested parties were given the opportunity to present their views for and against the granting of the vacation pursuant to ordinance number 22-2001. And whereas, the council has determined that the vacation of the streets should be granted. Uh, being duly advised in the premises, the city, council of the city of LaPorte, LaPorte, Indiana makes and approves the following findings. Number one, that there are no property owners whose property will be adversely affected by the public ways to be vacated. Number two, the vacation will not hinder the growth or development of the city of LaPorte. Number three, the vacation will not make access to the land of, will not make access to the land of any party by means of public way difficult or inconvenient. Number four, the vacation will not hinder the public access to church, school, public building, or place. Number five, the vacation will not hinder the use of any public way. Number six, the vacation requested by the petitioners is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of LaPorte. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of LaPorte, LaPorte, Indiana as follows. Section one, that the following described real property is hereby subject to retention of existing utility easements vacated. Jackson Street from Washington Street to the Railroad Rightofway and an alley north of Washington Street and south of the Railroad Right, Right, Rightofway between Jackson Street and Clay Street in the city of LaPorte, Indiana. Section number two, the clerk treasurer of the city of LaPorte is requested and directed to record this ordinance in the office of the recorder of LaPorte County, Indiana, and also to present this ordinance to the LaPorte County auditor. Section three, that this ordinance shall be in full force and in effect from and after its passage, adoption, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Discussion. Bert Cook.
Good evening, good evening, council. Bert Cook, executive director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. Nick Otis and I will probably touch on, uh, this together, but we've been, uh, working in conjunction with Bill Nelson, who's the attorney for, uh, Hearthfire Holdings, which is a company that has acquired, uh, the A to Z storage facility and surrounding big area we're talking about here. What's outlined in red would be the roadway and the right-of-way. There's a small section that's outlined in blue there. That is a piece of property that the city currently owns and we're, uh, the, the company is intending to purchase from the city. Um, and so, uh, we've been to traffic commission. Uh, we've kind of taken all of the appropriate steps. It would seem to make, uh, a lot of sense for, for us to vacate this right of way. The company can, uh, specializes in storage facilities. They're out of Pennsylvania, but, uh, they own facilities like this across the United States. Uh, upon completion of all of these different steps, they would, uh, tear down some of the buildings, which neither one of our police or fire chiefs are here tonight, but I think they would tell you that these have been.
There's a fire chief here.
He's hiding. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to put words in Andy's mouth, but hopefully he'll agree. Um, these are properties that have been incredibly problematic for the city from a, uh, a safety standpoint, from a law and order standpoint. And so we're really pleased to see this company, uh, purchase the development. If we're able to move forward with this, they will, um, like I said, knock down a couple of the buildings. They will properly fence and secure the remaining portions of the property and the things surrounding these properties. Nick, what did I miss?
Uh, tomorrow, the Board of Works will be considering the purchase agreement for that small parcel outlined, uh, in, in blue, which the city will sell to them. There's a process specific to, uh, municipality selling to an adjacent property owner. Uh, we've done this on a couple of other occasions. Uh, so, um, moving right along and as Bert said, a very professional organization that does this around the country.
Well, just from the perspective of cleanup, this deal is worth it, not even including a business coming there because of all the problems. Chief Snyder, would you like to add anything to the calls for service that yourself and the police do receive there?
Yes, we'd like to reiterate what Bert said. This is a win-win situation to clean this property up right here. Um, we have had a number of calls there over the years, culminated, probably best give you a description of, is in October, end of October, our units were called to that, uh, location where a series of Molotov, Molotov cocktails were used to try to burn that building, uh, multiple ones. It ended up, the state fire marshal will be coming involved. Luckily, next, uh, call that I got and it was Bert telling me that the property had been sold. So we would fully support this and, um, move on from there and again, clean up LaPorte. That's what it's about.
Absolutely. Thank you. Questions from the public? Questions from the council?
This isn't a question, but it's a comment. As Bert said, it did come before traffic commission and the vacation was unanimously accepted. So we all thought that it was a good thing.
Other questions? Hearing none. We'll then move that to the 16th of May for second reading. Thank you. Councilman Frankie, introduction of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance read for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Frankie.
An ordinance establishing a parking limit for large vehicles. Whereas, the common council of the city of LaPorte believes large vehicles should be restricted to, to our parking on city streets. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby ordained by the common council that, oh, I'm sorry, by the common council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, that section one, no person shall allow a truck, trailer, tractor, bus, boathouse, trailer, semi-trailer, dumpster, moving pod, or other vehicle having a load capacity in excess of one ton or a length in excess of 19 feet or a height in excess of six feet, six inches, or a width in excess of seven feet that is used for commercial purposes to be parked upon the streets of the city between the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM unless authorized by the parking services director or his or her designee. Any violation of this section shall be punishable by a fine of $50. Section two, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Discussion. Is this related to a few complaints we've received?
Yeah, and that's, um, the word "commercial" is in there for a purpose. Um, basically, you know, if you're running a, a commercial business with large equipment, um, you should have a place to park it at the end of the day and that's what this is about. We've had some, uh, street corners obstructed, you know, views obstructed, and, uh, it also takes away from parking capacity for residents. Um, one of the, the businesses that we received complaints about has since addressed the problem on their own. And I think it's also important, um, to point out, this isn't meant to single any specific business out, but, uh, it is meant specifically to make sure we have ample parking and also make sure things are safe for people.
Yeah, this came in front of traffic commission as well. And it wasn't just the one person that we talked about. And it's a safety issue as well because like the fire trucks can't get down roads if they have the big commercial vehicles parked there, like trailers and things like that, so.
And I'll add to that, the traffic commission definitely took into account all citizens, uh, the, the rights of everybody. Um, again, not to single anybody out, but to ensure that, uh, it's a kind of a, as best of one size fits all that we can. Uh, so not to single out anybody, uh, very clear, um, dry, and then looking for the off-hours, right? 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, um, which is a, so people can still commercially run their business throughout the day doing things, um, but with the time restriction being in, um, the night hours, if you will.
Public comment? Anybody from the public would like to speak on this?
I'd, I'd say, could you come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record? Danny Streeter, 210 Crescent Drive. Does that include dumpsters?
I, I think you have to have a permit to have a dumpster on the street, don't you?
Correct.
Well, I, I just asked because I, I brought it up to Jeff. There was a dumpster that sat on Maple Avenue for three months, you know where. I think Jeff got it taken care of, but sometimes dumpsters just show up and it's like, they're there forever. So it was just.
It does.
That's a good question.
Just a question.
It does mention dumpsters in the ordinance. And currently, you know, the issue is there's nothing, there, there's no city ordinance that says you can't do that right now.
So like, not to throw this up, but who's going to address? Who's going to manage this?
Police or code enforcement could issue then these tickets.
So if I have a 30, just asking, if I have a 30-foot boat sitting in front of my house all night?
In front of your house, it wouldn't be in the street.
Well, I know that. Example. I'm just saying.
It's, it's street parking?
It's a really fine, it's a really fine line because we've talked about this. Now I show, I'm, my boat's sitting here tonight.
The other, the other point of this, though, is it, it does say for commercial purposes. So if you own a fishing charter, then.
Then you're in trouble.
Well, my only point was, is Tom knows I'm a stinker, but now all of a sudden you got, let's just say Paul Brenton going up, going, hey, you got to move your boat. Lake life, living in the lake life. I mean.
So the big distinction though, as Tim, uh, alluded to, commercial purposes. So i- if you have, um, charter services LLC. No, sure.
I agree. This needs to be addressed, but is it?
But again, it's, you know, commercial use, so.
Yeah.
If it's your private boat.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Further questions from the council?
Yes, I had a question. I talked to.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Thank you. I talked to Councilwoman Frankie about this a little bit. I just wanted to make sure, and it also addresses what Dan Streeter was talking about. Do we have enough language in here? Um, I know if people are doing construction and they have to get a permit. Um, this says unless authorized by parking services director, which I'm not sure what or who that is, myself, and, or his or her designee, uh, do we have something? I mean, because people hire contractors who come in and put a dumpster for a week and it's out there for a week, but they have to get a permit. Do we have that covered in another ordinance or do we need other language in here for residential?
We, we probably need to designate properly who that would be within the city. It's code enforcement, yeah.
Yeah, because we had, we had an ordinance similar to this when we talked about it at traffic commission, and there were things that we took out and crossed out and changed. And I thought that we had taken that out because we had that same question at traffic commission.
So is that something we can clarify before the next?
For next. Okay.
Sure.
Great, thanks.
Further discussion? Hearing none, this will now move to the next common council meeting on May 16th. Councilwoman Cutler.
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution read for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Cutler.
A resolution approving use of Enterprise Zone investment deduction credits within a tax increment financing district. Whereas Infinite Development LLC, herein Infinite Development, has requested of the Common Council of the City of Laporte approval to use Enterprise Zone real property investment deduction credits within a tax increment finance district, or TIF, specifically the Central Business District allocation area number one, at the address 125 East Shore Court, Laporte, Indiana, 46350. And whereas Infinite Development's capital investment of $3 million for three new 5,470 square-foot professional office buildings is expected to employ approximately 20 construction workers and house approximately twenty, well, it says 20, then it's in parentheses 60, so that might be a correction, employees upon completion of the construction with occupancy beginning on or around November 2024. And whereas the city planner for the City of Laporte has provided analysis showing that use of the investment deduction credits would not adversely affect any TIF obligation in the TIF district. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Laporte as follows. Number one, the Infinite Development requests to use Enterprise Zone investment deduction credits within the Central Business District allocation area number two, or number one. Number two, said credit shall be for a period of 10 years. Number three, Infinite Development agrees to a fee of 35% of its investment deduction credit savings paid to the Laporte Urban Enterprise Zone each year for a period of 10 years to maintain eligibility in the program. End of resolution.
This is a resolution, so do I have a motion to approve?
You're gonna have a discussion.
Discussion.
And then I was gonna have a discussion.
Well, I guess I...
So we need to fix that?
Yes, we can have discussion first. Why don't I bring Bert Cook up?
And clarification if that's 20 or 60 employees?
I would note to the grammar police that Mr. Cook drafted this.
Yeah, and it's sixty, it should say sixty.
It should say sixty, alright.
And how's approximately, it shouldn't be employees either.
It says to employ approximately 20 construction workers and house approximately 60 employees. So the 60 employees will work within the buildings that are being built, being constructed.
The business is located in...
Oh, and house the, oh, okay.
So, just to give you a little background, and why some of you, I thought someone might remember and say, well, we passed this almost identical resolution in September of 2020. So there are four buildings being built. At the time, there was a little bit of uncertainty as to the timeline for when the subsequent buildings were going to be built, so we thought it best to just move forward with the first building, which mirrors what you see here, the differences, it was 20 employees per building. And so now we're at a place we'd like to go ahead and finish this process and approve the incentive for buildings two, three, and four. At your last council meeting, you'll remember, we sort of jumped into this particular discussion, not about this project, but as we discussed, the Enterprise Zone and the 1% administrative fee, that at any time that we go to use the investment deduction within an allocation area or a TIF district, we come before you as the city council to ask permission to do so. And we do that because in the, in other communities, they take on debt above what they can pay in that moment, and so to, to use a credit like this within that district could be problematic for your debt service. Laporte has never had that problem because we are very, very conservative in terms of how we take on debt. In my time here, we've never taken on any debt that we can't pay with today's dollars. And, and so that's just a little bit of a difference between our community and some others. But still, the process is a good one. We come back in front of you and make sure that you're aware that we're intending to use this credit within an area that is governed by the Redevelopment Commission and ultimately is, is a TIF district. So 60 employees are going to work, 20 in each building, three buildings, and then the construction workers, you can see.
Is this the project out by the end of the Chelsey Trail near Healthcare Foundation?
Correct, yeah, you've seen, you've seen the buildings. We're, Jerry Fedorcheck is here, appreciate him taking some time to be here with us this evening. We're very pleased with this development. I think it looks terrific. You have a really good idea of what's being built out there because you can see buildings that are already, already up. There's also townhomes that are being built as a part of this. The ones on Fish Trap Lake are going great as we speak right now, so. But today, we're talking about the three additional professional office buildings that are scheduled to be built in that area.
Make a motion to approve the resolution, provided Mr. Cook fixes his grammatical error.
Second.
Nick Oda sold me out in a heartbeat on that one, so.
I have a motion and a second discussion. So just to confirm, can you read through that one more time, just to make sure we're all...
Sure. So, it says, whereas Infinite Development's capital investment of $3 million for three new 5,470 square-foot professional office buildings is expected to employ approximately 20 construction workers and house approximately 60 employees upon completion of the construction with occupancy beginning on or around November 2024.
Further discussion? I'd like to take a minute, thank Mr. Fedorcheck. Come on forward if you'd like, and we hear rumors of sales already happening, or at least interest at those across the way while I have you, Fish Trap.
Right, I think we're 50% sold out on the townhomes already, so, you know, again, it's been a couple of years, but if we take our memories back, this project never would have happened without Tom being directly involved, and I'm not overstating that in the least bit. So this is part of a $16 million investment. This helps us greatly to help to afford the office portion, but this is part of the Fish Trap Townhomes and part of what we are going to call the Fish Trap or the East Shore Lofts, which is another portion which we're in the process of working on. So out of $16 million, you know, this probably is going to produce about $300,000, $400,000 of tax revenue to the city forever. So your little bit of investment in us is greatly appreciated, and I think it's really going to benefit everybody in the long run.
And I will tell you, thank you for the partnership, and I assume we're going to get a tour when complete before move in, a little groundbreaking, or I mean ribbon-cutting?
You better believe it.
While I have you, if I may, open discussion, can I legally open to other items? So Jerry, you've seen the issues as you're looking to develop up on 39 North.
Yes.
We're trying to solve that problem by providing upgraded infrastructure in exchange for annexation. You're doing 30 to 40 homes roughly, you're trying to, but based on the water, not having enough suppression to allow people to feel safe in the homes if you were to build them, if we solve that...
Seven units there now is because this is not resolved. So the moment it's resolved, you know, we have a little bit of front-end work to do and get our bank loans and everything in order, but essentially, the moment that's resolved, this project moves forward.
And you wouldn't, you could support, not to put you on the spot, and I'm sorry, annexation isn't a problem for you?
I live at the Legacy Hills Golf Course, which we're technically in the county. This project's technically in the county. Center Township Fire Department's wonderful, but the fact of the matter is they're located a substantial distance away. I would sleep a lot better, and I'm sure our purchasers would sleep a heck of a lot better, knowing that the Laporte Fire Department, which is a mile or two down the road, is there to protect them, as opposed to a volunteer fire department, God love them, that's five or six miles away. So it's a big difference.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fedorcheck? Thank you for your investment.
Thank you.
So I do have a motion and a second further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state unless you have...
He's coming up.
Sure?
I don't know.
Forgot where I was now. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0.
Thank you.
Councilman Galloway.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce a resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Galloway.
A resolution to transfer funds within the 2022 budget. Whereas there are additional monies needed in certain line items in the 2022 budget in order to pay for essential services and obligations. Therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Common Council of the City of Laporte, Indiana, that the following transfers be made within the following budgets for the year 2022. General Police Department, 11-1-3-7-0, what's that, 30? Dash 30? From repairs and maintenance 361 to operating supplies 221, $30,000. From professional services 315 to operating supplies 221, $5,000. End of resolution.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion, and I think this is the standard of all within the police department, so. With that, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. Bert Cook, annual compliance forms. And thank you for taking the lead on this.
Alright, so one more thing from me today, and then I will be done. So many of you remember that typically, our city planner will be in front of you right about this time of the year, and will take us through the tax abatement compliance process. So that is intentional, as I think there's a really nice checks and balance when you have your economic development people who are making incentive offers, and then you have our planning department who are kind of checking over that each year and going through the process of making sure that our companies are, are making progress towards their commitments they've made in the tax abatement process. So all of the information you have in your packet is put together by our city planner, Craig Phillips, in his office. He can't be here tonight, and so I volunteered to just assist and get us through this process. Sometimes we bring the companies here as part of this process. In this instance, and when I go through everything with you, I think, hopefully you'll agree, didn't see a real need to do that. We were generally pretty close to where we need to be on almost every one of these statement of benefits, so we didn't invite them, but I do have background. We did talk with each company, obviously, they filled out their paperwork, and then we went back and, and got some narrative with each one of the companies in any of those areas where there were some discrepancies. So just as a reminder, what we're going to do, we have six, seven of these to do. You're going to be asked, after I walk through the, the numbers with you, you're going to be asked to, to look at four different options. The taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits, that's option one. Option two, the taxpayer has made a reasonable effort to comply. Three, taxpayer's failure to comply with the statement of benefits is for reasons beyond the taxpayer's control. And then the final option is the taxpayer is not in substantial compliance with the approved statement of benefits. So for each one, we'll be looking for a motion using the appropriate or according sort of option. I will give you our city planner's recommendation as well, and I think you have that in your packets, so if that's helpful, that's there for you as well. So is that clear? Are we, every, did I cover everything in terms of what we're going to do?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so we'll start with, and I'll just give you brief synopsis, ask me questions. If there's anything that I didn't cover, we'll, I'll try and get through that and make sure I get the right answers for you, but we'll start with Montisol. So if you see in the resolution number, the year at the end will tell you the year that the incentive was approved. So we have a couple of these that are getting ready to expire, Montisol being the first. But on their statement of benefits, they estimated their employment after this expansion would be 37. They've actually employed 157 individuals. Accordingly, you can see their estimated salaries was 1.8 million, actual salaries 11.8 million. You can kind of see how the dramatic increase in employment affects the actual salaries. Originally, they estimated that they would be investing $5 million in real property. Their actual investment was $6.8 million. And then on the personal property side, it was a $34 million estimate. The company's actually exceeded that, and the actual investment number is 52 million, 52.5 million. On the personal property, this company uses the investment deduction through the urban enterprise zone, so we're not asking you to take action on the personal property, only the real property. But as you can see, based on these numbers, they're substantially in compliance, and this will be the la, this will be the last year that you will see this particular tax abatement in front of you.
So is there a motion to approve substantial compliance?
Well, I'd make a motion as it pertains to Montisol. I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds. The taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion? I would like to say we're fortunate to have Montisol in Laporte.
Yeah.
We'd love to take their Lebanon facility and bring it up here to Laporte, so I know the mayor well in Lebanon, so hopefully he'll hear the...
Perfect, thank you. And I, I didn't check my notes close enough. I did want to mention one other thing. There is a distinction, a company has 10 years to reach these goals, so in this instance, Montisol is in that 10th year, so they should be at a place where they've met their goals or are close. We're going to have some other companies that are just in the middle of the process, so remember that it's, it's not always linear, so we have companies that hire and then have to lay people off and then hire again, and it also, generally speaking, they should be making progress as they get further and further along with the incentive. So next is Win Machine, 2015 was the, this incentive was approved. They estimated their employment would be three individuals, their actual number is four, estimated salaries of 84,000, their actual salary number is 171, 171,000. And then this is strictly for personal property, so equipment. And again, you've seen this number before. They estimated at the time that the purchase of equipment was going to be about 600,000. The actual piece of equipment only cost 206,000. So that's, that's not going to change, that's, that's going to be a static number because that's what the cost of the equipment was when they originally purchased it. You're going to see a consistent pattern of estimated salaries versus actual salaries here. We all know kind of what goes on in our community and others, but the, the salary number is going to be high for just about everybody, and that's because our, our residents are making more, being paid more, so. So again, the recommendation here is substantial compliance due to exceeding employment and salary estimates.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Your Honor, as pertains to Win Machine, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds. The taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? And I'd also like to say the council previous to this one in support of this, because now they're owned by private equity, which could really help grow their business.
Correct.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0.
Next is Jaeger Unitec. 2014, this incentive was approved, estimated at that time, they were going to employ 26 additional individuals. The actual number is 69. They estimated their salaries to be 811,000, the actual number is 3,727,000. So again, just as we talked about before, much larger employment and salaries. On the real property, they estimated that they were going to invest about $420,000. They exceeded that investment and actually invested 1.1 million, a little over 1.1 million. So our recommendation is that they are in substantial compliance.
Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, as pertains to Jaeger Unitec, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds. The taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
B&amp;B Manufacturing is next. Tax abatement approved in 2015. They estimated their employment would be 40, their actual employment is 29. They're one that has been up and down, if you can recall from previous years. Estimated salaries of 1.4 million, actual salaries of 2.8 million. On the real property, they estimated they would invest 3.5 million. Company has exceeded that with an actual investment of 3.504 million. On the personal property, they estimated that they would be investing 2.8 million, the actual number is 3.2 million. So we, we suggest that they're in compliance, they made a reasonable effort to comply with the SB1. From the company, just a couple of things, employment pressures due to COVID and kind of the, the, just sort of general economic climate surrounding that have caused their inability to meet their estimated employment at this point, but they, again, they still have three, four years left in order to, to meet that goal.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion as it pertains to B&amp;B Manufacturing. I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds. The taxpayer has made a reasonable effort to comply with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0.
Alright, next up is Helmet Casting and Services, so the, this tax abatement was approved in 2014. So this will be one that, that we've seen some, I mean, I think it's well-known that this is probably our, the company locally that's been hardest hit by the COVID pandemic. They, they estimated their employment would be 312 employees, their actual number's 93, but again, just a few short years ago, they were, they had surpassed their employment goal. Estimated salaries of 23.7 million, actual salaries of 8.4 million. On the real property, they estimated that they would invest 27.725 million. They've exceeded that with a $64 million investment. On the personal property side, they estimated that they would be investing 83 million, the actual number is 80 million and some change. So it's our recommendation that they've made a reasonable effort to comply with the SB1. Again, I'll just... Again, I'll just refer back to, they make parts for the aerospace industry, the industry that's been most hurt by the, the lack of air travel and COVID pandemic. You know, they've been one that if we looked at their, at their progress on a, on a line graph, we'd see, you know, significant variations there. So they are on a path hiring again, which is great to hear. That industry has rebounded, so our hope is that the next time, the next couple times that we're, that we're in front of you for compliance, that hopefully those numbers are back to where they were pre-pandemic and, and they will have met those goals.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion as pertains to Helmet Casting and Services. I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds. The taxpayer has made a reasonable effort to comply with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? And really, for all intents and purposes, they were shut down there for a while.
Correct.
So they're surviving and back at it, so that's great. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero.
LaPorte MOB, so this is the medical office building built by Holiday Properties in Newport Landing. Abatement was approved in 2019. They estimated their employment would be five individuals, and these are, let me, let me get through, I'll, I'll explain the employment piece. Estimated of five, their actual number is two. They estimated the salary number of 175,000, the actual number is 300,000. The, the investment in the real property was an estimated 2.7, the actual number came in just under 2.7. So this is a, a medical office building that houses Northwest Health, LaPorte, Northwest Health, LaPorte Hospital employees. And so there are a significant number of more people that work in that facility, but those were people that were already employed when this project was approved. So these are only new jobs that we're looking at, and the, I would argue that the intent of, of our process is to look at the individuals that are working within the space, the tenant, because it is a tenant in this instance, the tenant that's in the space. And so those two individuals that are employed are actual doctors. They have, I think, in the neighborhood of 35 support staff that work in that building as well, but those were employees that were already on the payroll of Northwest Health before this project occurred. And so reasonable effort to comply with the SB one, and, you know, looks, the outlook is very positive that they'll, they'll meet all of their goals by the end of this 10-year period.
Do I have a motion?
Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion as it pertains to LaPorte Newport MOB LLC. I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds. The taxpayer has made a reasonable effort to comply with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Would you like to comment all?
One more, one more, sorry.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I apologize, this, I think we, I passed out the documentation of this earlier, but it didn't make it onto the list. American Licorice, though, is the company that we're, that we're reviewing, so their estimated employment number was 35 new employees, their actual number is 191 new employees. They, they estimated that they would create new salary of 1.055 million, the actual number is 11.6 million. And this was a personal property expansion, so the company had estimated a $9.8 million purchase of equipment, the actual number came in at 7.8 million. And so we, our recommendation is that they are, they've made a reasonable effort to comply with the SB one.
Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, as pertains to American Licorice, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds. The taxpayer has made a reasonable effort to comply with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Cook. And while we have you a moment, there are a couple of questions came up.
Sure.
About why the old hospital building has fence around it.
Absolutely, so. We are excited to, to be able to share that the, the old LaPorte Hospital is preparing for demolition. Fencing that is up is starting that process. The mayor suggested he's going to implode the building himself, so just wanna be ultra safe. Right.
Danny's fireworks.
And charge Danny's fireworks and charge admission.
But no, so we're talking June, July, we should see demolition begin on that space, and we're very pleased the, the hospital has included the city in the process of, of looking for the appropriate developer to, to come up with a plan and to ultimately decide how that space is best put back into use for our, for our city. And, and that process will, will kind of be ongoing as this demolition gets ready to occur, and we'll look forward to a very different landscape in that portion of our downtown.
Is it actually gonna be imploded?
I, it is not.
We don't want tickets.
I think I did have, we've had people call the office too and ask about the artwork, some of the artwork that is there. I think that, at this point, they're gonna try and keep that as part of the new redevelopment plan, so if, if people were interested in that, that's, that's the plan as we speak.
What about the flowers out front and all that? We've actually had calls, is that available for the taking?
That is a great question, I do not know the answer to. Because of the fencing, I would think that might be a little bit problematic, but, but I can ask.
But thanks to the Healthcare Foundation and the hospital for donating so much of their furniture, and that did the walkthrough and brought a lot back for us, so.
Well, it'd be dramatic, I mean, you come in south on Pine Lake Ave, it's the building you see coming into town, and it's gonna be gone, and I believe we buy our fire trucks based off the height of the, of the hospital, correct? I think the booms on those go as high as the top floor of the hospital, so.
It will be really interesting to see, as the, you know, becomes very important to come up with a plan that best utilizes that space and really contributes to our, kind of the, the plan that we have for growing our downtown. So I'm, I'm excited about that process and what, what that will become in the future as well.
Thank you. Other business? Oh, first of all, we do have a trailer ordinance that has been tabled. Would we like to take that off the table and withdraw it?
That's part of what we went through tonight, correct, Councilman?
Yeah. Do I need to make a?
I would have a motion to take it off the table, we can just do it in one motion, and then withdraw that, that ordinance then.
Motion to take the trailer ordinance off the table and withdraw it?
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. Please, tomorrow is election day, do your part, go out and vote, one vote can make a difference. Do your education, do your work, Republican, Democrat, Libertarian, or anybody else. Get out and vote, and do your part. Do I have a motion or anything else from the pub, from the councils?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, everybody have a great evening.